The UK government themselves seem to be unable to give a firm commitment as to when they're actually going to have everybody on to Universal Credit that's currently sitting on legacy benefits. And I'm just really wondering, given that, it's really going to be very difficult for the department, other than in the most skeletal outline, to be able to indicate, you know, for example, staffing levels is a good example. Clearly, logic tells you that you would be moving staff on to different duties as the caseload drops. But we don't know when the caseload genuinely will start to actually drop at significant levels. So I was just really wondering what you're looking for and how deliverable it would be for corporate services to actually come up with anything.
Thanks. Maybe Jackie Capel might want to come in on that. But what we are looking for is really, as you say, a sort of baseline plan, if you like, when information does become available, that it's factored in so that there's something more formal to help inform the decision-making process in the service itself for moving, like you say, the likes of resource around, et cetera.
Jackie, are you looking to add to that?
Yes, I can, I can add to that. I mean, all we can really do is monitor our caseload going forward and break down our caseload and be completely agile on our caseload moving forward and keep abreast of all the changes that the DWP are bringing in.
Can I just come back on that? I was just going to say, I totally agree with Jackie. I think it's a significant challenge to put anything meaningful in place because until it's a bit clearer as to the stage with which different types of claim, you know, income support move on to Universal Credit, GSA, capacity benefit, whatever it is, start moving across and how it's even done, it's going to be quite difficult. So, you know, I'm grateful to departments, you know, as they say, keeping a watch and brief on the situation. But I sort of, you know, I wouldn't view it as a criticism of the fact that the plans cannot be that well structured at this point because it's too many, you know, too many unknown factors, to be honest.
Agree, I agree.
Can I maybe ask a question? I think you raise a point, Bailey MacPherson. How do we deal with this going forward? Because if it lands on an audit plan that needs to be addressed and we don't know what we're trying to address, then it's going to sit there for the next four years. So how do we look to address that where some action's been taken and it can be effectively complete as an audit, as opposed to being open-ended with the sort of, yeah, we'll keep the watchful brief? Perhaps it's the director of corporate services that needs to answer that, but...
Yeah, thanks, Bailey Keenan. So I think just to follow up on what Jackie Capel had said, that I think the plan is going to have to be very high level and is going to almost have to be what we currently know and be flexed for changes. I don't see it being a detailed plan. I almost see it being something that we just look to based on the information and it's just to give, I think, scrutiny that reassurance that officers will be monitoring, continue to joint work with the DWP to make sure that we're aware of what's happening and when it's happening, where that's possible, given the goalposts. So I certainly don't see this being a detailed plan. It's something that would be very high level, focused very much, as Jackie has said, on caseloads and something that just allows us to tweak or just monitor any changes that come through. I think the real challenge here, as Bailey MacPherson has outlined, is that universal credit should be fully implemented, but there continues to be significant changes to the implementation plan. So that would be my approach going forward to make sure that we've got a very high-level plan. It's not sitting as an outstanding action plan and officers can use that and then report back to the relevant group or committee if there is any significant change in terms of the implementation going forward and the impact on citizens within the city.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you. So the next review was on respite services. We reviewed the arrangements in place for assessing the respite care and support needs of children and the subsequent planning, scheduling and delivery of the required service provision. In addition, on request from the service itself, we also considered a number of proposals to potentially change service delivery. We've concluded again that there's basically a sound system of control there with some areas for improvement identified. The main areas are around establishing formal eligibility criteria for respite care and using those in the decision-making process to help demonstrate ongoing fairness and consistency. What I think is important to note, though, at this stage is that there were no areas for improvement identified in the sample of cases that was selected as part of the audit fieldwork and no other concerns highlighted. The other area for improvement is around further developing the approach that's been taken to date surrounding the proposals to potentially change the service delivery, just so that they're better supported and informed. Thank you.
Okay. Bailey Scott, I think you're looking to come in.
Sorry, it took me too long to switch between the screen I had to go on to say I want to ask a question and the screen to come back on to be able to get to my mute button. So apologies for that. My question probably is for one of the service managers. When the mention of eligibility criteria, because the main text in the first page says that social work professionals currently carry out an assessment of clients before making a recommendation. And I just wondered how that would differ from eligibility criteria because it is a very big budget with huge demand for it as well. And so what isn't being done at the moment that isn't, that there's no criteria at the moment, are we sure that the people who actually need it the most are getting the support? And then my second question is regarding the changed service delivery that makes up the second bullet point there. That's quite ahead of work there. And will we be getting reports to committee to let us know what these changes are?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, Paul, if you can.
Yeah, no problem. Bailey Scott, I think I just missed a little bit of your first question. I'm sorry, I kind of fell out there. I got the second one okay. The first one was really to do with the criteria that's currently being used to make the assessments.
Well, yeah. And what would the difference be? Because presumably with it being a really tight budget with lots of demand on it, that there would be an established criteria already to determine the priority of applicants for it.
Yeah. Well, there's 140 families at the moment that we've done a formal section 23 assessment of. The section 23 assessment has got some loose criteria in it. And it's not that we don't use criteria, but we treat each case on its individual merits based on what section 23 outlines as who would be required to receive support. I think the issue that's been highlighted is as the demands for respite increase, because that's 140, but it's actually, it's going up, there needs to be something that's firmly there to ensure that the decisions, it's not that these families all require support, it's the level of support that's required and it's to make sure that we've actually got that absolutely fair. So families could challenge that and we would have something that said, yeah, this is equitable right across the system. So it's not that there's not criteria. I think the criteria need to be placed in a way that sets out bandings that allows us to be able to justify decisions that have been made. We're not getting complaints about the respite that we're providing, but as demands increase, I think we need to have a more justifiable position in terms of decisions that need to be made. Because you are right, it's quite a heavy-duty budget and we believe it going forward. And if you look at the profile of the young people that are coming through the system, there will be greater demands placed upon on respite. And we certainly are very keen in terms of the promise in the care review, which talks about trying to maintain more families locally, that respite will play a key part in us being able to maintain the children locally. So we're actually anticipating respite playing a larger part in what we're actually doing. So this criteria needs to be set and I think in a way that allows these decisions to be made and to be demonstrably justifiable. And at the moment, it's just not tight enough. The second question is to do with will it be coming to committee? Yes, when tend to bring a report to committee that sets our approach to respite once it's finalised.
That's a very helpful answer. Thank you.
Can I maybe ask a question, Paul? You know, it appears that it's about two and a half million or the best part of two and a half million between 140 families, which would run out about 17 and a half or 17.3 thousand pounds per family, which is quite considerable when you're picking up the respite care. So it really does show the value of carers and the work that they do that saves, you know, or saves the public purse. And so, you know, I haven't got a problem with respite, but I know that we have respite for, or we should be looking at respite for young carers as well. And I think that would probably take things way beyond 140 families if we put it and no doubt take that budget up considerably as well. So I'm wondering whether there is a paper that you can give either the scrutiny committee or would it be best to give some presentation to give a better understanding of respite in the city and the demands and the need of the individuals?
Yeah, I'd be very happy to provide either as a briefing for all elected members or something specifically for scrutiny, Bailey Keenan, something on that more generic respite. Remembering this is respite that comes under section 23, with families who have children with needs, the young carers. It's a slightly different approach that we take, but it would be important to kind of quantify it, I think, in a similar way so you have an understanding of how that's done. So be more than happy to provide some kind of briefing for elected members or something for scrutiny that would give you that detail.
It may be even good to sort of have an understanding of the level of needs of the individuals in the city that we're supporting. Just, you know, because it is a considerable amount of budget, you know, and I suppose it makes me consider that we should value these individuals all the more. Because if that's only picking up the respite and they're saving the public purse considerably by the work that they're doing, supporting their own families.
I agree with what you're saying. I think it's a balance because some of these families, the needs are quite multifaceted and complex. And one of the reasons why it's important that we get respite to work is so that the children can be, can stay at home, where you're actually going to get the best outcomes from parents and from family who know them. Some of the families are in quite difficult situations and they require maybe more help than others because they don't always have the same extended family or the same social structures to provide the support. And we're acutely conscious that if we're not able to maintain these children within the community, often the only option for us is to look for what could be challenging foster care to find or indeed external residential placements, which, not that money is the kind of main thing here, but they are very, very expensive and often take the child away from their community. So respite, it's good for us to be able to do this in the main because it provides the best outcomes for the young people. But in terms of trying to operate within a budget, it makes actually sense to have the most efficient respite programme that you can.
I'll not push any further on that. Thanks for that response. And I'd welcome the sort of briefing or the note that you could put out to the members of the scrutiny committee. But I would quite happy to discuss it offline with you at some time and give me a better understanding of what an S23 assessment is and the type of complex needs without delving too far into any individual case. I thank you for that. Can I maybe ask if there's any more questions on this before we ask Pamela to move on to the next one? Okay then, Pamela, if you want to move on.
Thank you. So the next report is on FirmStep. We carried out a review of the data security, reliability and other customer service outcomes relating to the FirmStep platform, which is utilised by the council to drive and support the channel shift programme. We have concluded again that this is basically a sound system of control with some areas for improvement identified, including compiling and agreeing a formal terms of reference for the channel shift project board, compiling procedures regarding how my Dundee services are developed and implemented, so a bit about the key activities and the individuals involved in those activities, compiling a plan in relation to the continued implementation of the FirmStep platform with some proposed timescales for scheduling and future projects and carrying out cost-benefit analysis where appropriate, just so that the overall savings and other benefits can be calculated, in particular for the bigger projects.
Bailey MacPherson, you're looking to come in on that?
Yeah. My question really is about the workings of FirmStep. And I was wondering if, I noticed Pamela in the report and indeed your summary there, it talks about things like terms of reference and cost-benefit analysis and documentation, things like that. What I was really wondering was, did the audit look at the quality of information flow from customer services to service departments? And I have a reason for asking that. It's partly because of some of the statistics actually I to make on the biennial report on, sorry, biennial report on complaints in relation to the increase of complaints in relation to failure to provide a service and administrative process. And to be honest, the question really comes more from my colleague, councillor Duncan, rather than myself. And what he was wondering was this, he's had a number of constituents contact him to say that they had contacted customer services, whatever service it was that they had reported, it hadn't happened. And that when he had contacted the service department, they had no record of actually ever being advised of the service complaint. Now, he doesn't doubt for a moment that if the thing came into customer services, something happened to it. He's not suggesting for a moment that nothing was done with it. But I suppose my question really is around, is there any monitoring of the quality control as to where a service request actually goes to and the follow-up via FirmStep to ensure that the actual service request actually did happen and was successfully completed?
Really good question. I would need to look back at the working paper file before I could answer that, though, quite honestly. What I will say is I do remember, though, that the quality of, I suppose, the feedback, if you like, from the customers that use FirmStep, we did look at that as part of the audit. So on the FirmStep platform itself, there's a thumbs up, thumbs down functionality so that members of the public using that platform, if you like, can comment on it. So we did look at that element, but in relation to your question about the quality of information passing to service departments, I would need to look into that and come back to you.
Right. Thanks for that. I noticed Greg Watson as well.
Thanks, convener. Bailey MacPherson, just to give you some reassurance and I'll let Pamela come back to you. When we're developing FirmStep processes, services are part of that development. So the customer services IT team and say, for example, neighbourhood services, they all work collectively on the process. And within that process, there will be alerts that will flag up, for example, if requests remain outstanding over the service period of time. So I think if Pamela comes back to you, hopefully she can give you that level of assurance and we can probably try to track some of them through. As always, if there's any specifics that any elected member has, then officers would be more than willing to look at them specifically. But generally, from the intelligence that I've had, there doesn't appear to be a problem, but it's certainly something that we would look to get further assurance and report back to you on.
That's very helpful. I mean, councillor Duncan doesn't deny for a moment, it's anecdotal in the sense that it's a number of constituents said, I reported this, nothing happened. He then goes to the, he gave me one specific example, it happened to be neighbourhood services, but it could have been anyone, you know, it could have been any department, really. And when he went to the service manager, who is an extremely good manager, he couldn't find any record of actually, you know, the thing ever happening. Now, these things will happen. You know, the report itself alludes to the volume of this stuff and I fully accept it's anecdotal, but what maybe the message is, is if there's, you know, a recurring issue, just to raise it with yourselves and I would certainly do that.
Councillor Short's reporting a bit of feedback. Have we got any IT people here? Would us just give people a reminder to put on mute when they're not talking and hopefully that tries to resolve some of the feedback issues? Filling that, sorry, we'll just have to kind of live with it. And seems to be no other questions on that. If you'd like to move on to the next item then, Pamela.
Thank you. The next report was on leadership training and development, where we carried out a high-level review of the council's approach to providing staff with development opportunities that are proportionate, appropriate and of relevance to improving service delivery. And again, we've concluded that there's basically a sound system of control there. There was one main area of improvement identified and that was really around the delivery of EP and DRs, just to ensure that there's more consistent approach throughout the organisation. And then the completion of those EP and DRs are recorded centrally so that senior management can use that information for monitoring and reporting purposes.
Councillor McCready?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. I mean, it's more of a comment perhaps than a question. It's about the introduction in the report on page nine. In the third paragraph, it talks about, it talks about and predicts a reduction in employee numbers. I understand that years of austerity from Westminster and Hollywood have led to cutting council funding and I'm aware of it, but what I'm not aware of is that, you know, that we've ever sort of agreed that a significant, agreed that there were a significant reduction in employee numbers. I think I just worry to some extent that becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy that we talk about it and that, and then we talk about it that much, that it just becomes the reality. But I think we should be making the case for municipal services and arguing for appropriate funding rather than accepting reductions are inevitable, convener. I mean, it's more a comment than a question, I suppose.
I would certainly agree with you. Don't know if any officer wants to make a comment. Nobody's rushing to it. Mr. Councillor McCready?
Yeah, thanks, Bailey Keenan. Happy to come in here. So I think councillor McCready is correct. The council has agreed a midterm financial strategy. That financial strategy does, you know, use scenarios to plan what the reduction could be depending on forecasts, but what it doesn't specifically do is state how the council will close that gap. So I think that comment is valid and something that officers will take on board for future reporting.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other question on this item? Move on to the next one then.
Thank you. So the next review is in relation to employability pathway. We carried out a review of the arrangements in place to manage and monitor delivery of the employability pathway. Again, we've concluded there's basically a sound system of control there with a couple of areas for improvement identified. But the main area for improvement is really around the working practice of paying delivery partners immediately following receipt of their quarterly claims. That's if the council's obviously happy that they're accurate, as opposed to waiting until the Scottish government as managing authority complete their compliance checks. So really, the partnership agreements that are in place at the moment are not aligned to the working practice. So we've recommended that those agreements are updated to reflect that.
Okay. It doesn't appear to be any questions on that. Happy enough to move on to the next item. Okay, thank you. Item three then on the agenda. Is that yourself again then, Pamela?
Yes, thank you. So this is the summary of progress on implementation of recommendations. And the recommendations are previously agreed by management, I should say. This is normally reported to scrutiny committee in September every year. However, this year we deliberately delayed the exercise to give management a little bit more time during the pandemic to address the recommendations that had been made. As you know, these are management assurances. We don't review evidence to support what's being said. We don't have enough resource to do that. That said, this year I had committed to setting aside some time, had said to elected members, senior management and external audit, that I would set aside some time to review a sample of evidence relating to the internal financial controls review, which you'll all remember was a follow-up of the recommendations made by PWC in their two reports following the significant fraud. So you'll see in the report there at paragraph 4.4, I'm concluding basically that the sample review process that we carried out states that the updates given in this report, which are on the foot of page 22 and at the top of page 23 are accurate. But in addition to that, the three recommendations included in last year's progress review exercise, which at that time were reported as being 100% implemented, we looked at evidence as well to support that and can conclude again that that is accurate. They were 100%, they are 100%. What that means is that whilst further work is required on three of the seven recommendations, all of the recommendations relating to the construction services elements of the findings are now fully implemented, I can say that. So just to summarise really on this progress review exercise, there were 157 recommendations from 70 internal audit reports included in this year's annual exercise. 60 of those recommendations were part of last year's exercise as well. Of that, 157 recommendations, 59 are fully implemented and those will now drop off the monitoring process unless they're part of a formal follow-up. 96 are partly implemented and two are not implemented. The two that are not implemented, though, I will say that they're not critical recommendations. As you know, all of the services will be represented today on the committee. So if there's any questions about the updates in that progress review exercise, then I'm sure they'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Is there any questions on this report? Fraser?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Yeah, my question's about, first item on page 25 of the substantive page numbers, which is about user access levels. I heard what Pamela said in relation to you're effectively having to take service department word for, you know, how they've got on and so on. You can't obviously physically go in and check every single one. So my question's really, it's about user access reviews. And that goes back, I remember a discussion about that and that goes back a little bit of time, to be honest. I noticed the original report was 2017/11, so it does go back a little bit of time. The progress is 10%. Now, it does indicate that, you know, stalled due to COVID and priorities, including Office 365 rollout. I think we'll accept IT's been a little bit busy this year. So, you know, I'm not being critical in any way, but I suppose my question, it's more for service department than Pamela, is what's the 10% progress? And I would guarantee, because clearly user access is critical in terms, you know, and the review of that is critical in terms of ensuring that it's appropriate, frankly. And I was just really wondering, it also indicates that the revised implementation date is next June. So I was just really wondering, what the 10% progress is to date? And I would be satisfied that we will actually get to the end of this by the middle of next year.
Good. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Bailey Keenan. So just in response to Bailey MacPherson's question, I'm not sure if Pamela's got the detail around the 10%, but if she doesn't have it available, then it's something we can provide to scrutiny members. This particularly is in relation to looking at, I think, user access across a number of systems. So just to give committee a reassurance, that there is automatic processes in place that when someone leaves the council, then they are removed from the corporate desktop and that removes their access to all systems, where what this particularly looking at might be the individual systems as well. So there are high-level controls that are in place that would stop someone, for example, that left the organisation on the 30th of November, being able to come back into systems. I think, as you've rightly said, we had to adjust the priorities of the IT team, particularly due to COVID and the extirpation of Office 365. But it is a priority for the IT team to work with services going forward. And the recent update I had from Bill McCleary and Jackie Capel would indicate that that June date will be met. And if possible, officers will look to complete that review ahead of it, given the fact that two big pieces of work in terms of the new Microsoft product and the data centre moves have now been complete. So I don't know if Pamela's got details around the 10%, but if not, we can certainly follow that up after the meeting.
That, sorry, I think Pamela's the way to speak. So sorry, Pamela, you go first.
That's okay. I was just going to say, no, I don't have the detail. The comments that are in the report were pulled from Pentana, so I don't have what sits behind that. But we could find out and come back to you.
That's fine. My question, Greg, really was less to do with people that had left the organisation because I sort of suspect that, you know, their user accesses to various systems will depart with them, if you know what I mean. It was all about, I remember the original discussion, which is some time ago, and bear in mind I have an over 50 memory, but if I recall, we had a bit of a discussion around ensuring that there was adequate division of duties and that it was, you know, it was about appropriateness of access, really. And is that part of it, just to ensure that we're satisfied that each user appropriately has access to different systems and the level at which they have access? Because I thought that was part and parcel, it's not just whether or not they... Because I thought that was part and parcelless, not just whether or not they departed from the system, if you like, on departure of their employment.
Yes, so my understanding is that that's exactly what we're looking to do here. There will be segregation of duties in place, but it's carrying out that review to make sure if someone's moved on to a different post within the organisation, the access has been tailored for that. And that sits across the whole council. So for example, from a house and benefit perspective, Jackie Capel's team will make sure that when someone moves on to another part of the council or a different role, they are changing the security settings and the system that she's administering. So that's exactly one of the aims of the review.
Yeah, well, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Councillor McCready?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, convener. First one's about the item on page 20 about personal protective equipment. And it talks about the exponential growth in the use of PPE, which I think we all understand has been the case this year. And also talks about the pandemic making it harder to track the use and training, I think is what it's saying in the report. I just have a slight concern that poorly used PPE might put people at more risk than possibly even using no PPE. So I think it's important that we're convinced, or officers convinced, that PPE is being used appropriately by all staff and that the staff who require PPE have access to it. And it would also be good to have an idea on whether that's been the case throughout the whole pandemic. And I've got another question on an undeleted item, so maybe leave it at that, convener.
Good, Greg.
Yeah, thanks convener and thanks councillor McCready for the question. Just to give you an assurance that current PPE is all within adequate levels. And we've got two models within the council that are supplying care homes and also Nord Care Home staff PPE. And when we reported last week, there was no issues in terms of stock. Throughout the pandemic, services have worked really hard with trade unions and on risk assessments. And I think convener, if you're agreeable, I'd just like to invite Janet Robertson just to explain a few words around the work that's been done to give scrutiny that assurance regarding the training and support that's been put in place for employees to do exactly what councillor McCready has indicated and making sure they're working in a safe and secure environment.
Good, thank you. Janet?
Yeah, thanks for that Greg. Yes, we undertake twice weekly telephone calls with the trade unions. But right at the very beginning of the pandemic, we met with them daily. And each different service area, we agreed we would review all job descriptions with respect to COVID. We would look at the specific PPE that was required. And the trade unions worked with us to make sure that we signed off on all of those risk assessments, which included how to put masks on effectively, how to use the effective other measures that were in place. Any issues that have been raised by the trade unions, we have tackled either at the meeting that I have with them or we have referred them to their service area. And we've encouraged all service areas to have regular local discussions with the trade unions. And we've actually had some pretty good successes and limited follow ups. So I'm pleased to report.
Good, your full.
Yeah, no, thanks very much. I think that's useful. It's good to hear that. I mean, I know certainly at the start of the pandemic, the trade unions were very vocal at times. But it's good to hear that the council is speaking to them. My second question was on page 30 around the climate change strategy and the climate action plan. And I suppose my question, I mean, again, I understand progress being held up by COVID-19. Does strike me that, you know, this is the climate change and climate emergency seems to be, is, is, should be one of the priorities of the council. We've certainly said it's a big deal. And I wonder if officers have got a view on whether this area of work, this area of expertise is properly resourced within the council and whether officers have got the appropriate skills and training to take it forward and whether we might need to look at developing those skills or employing new people to make sure that we do have the ability to deal with the climate change and the climate emergency in the future.
Good, Greg.
Thanks convener. So councillor McCready, if I can start off just responding to you then, maybe invite Robyn Presswood. Scrutiny members will be aware that a report was considered by the Policy and Resources Committee in November. And part of that was that the chief executive would carry out a review along with council and management team to ensure that we adequately resource the climate change and the work that we need to deliver over the next weeks and months ahead. That review is about to be undertaken where we're looking at the resources currently within the council across all services and can we better deploy those or whether or not there's a need for additional resource. So once that review is completed, I'm happy to share the outcome with that and let you know what the planned action is to ensure that we're resourcing this priority of the council in an appropriate way. So hopefully that answers that part of your question. And I'm not sure, convener, if Robyn Presswood has anything further to add, just so that councillor McCready is receiving a full response.
Many thanks Greg and councillor McCready. Yeah, in terms of the size of the team, it's currently two people. We are carrying out the review that Greg has referred to. It did catch my eye, the fact that we had assessed what is the comprehensive programme of activity as having completed only 10% of it. And I think there's either a glitch in the system or we're marking ourselves unnecessarily hard. But I think the fundamental question that councillor McCready has raised is a good one. And I think Greg has addressed it in terms of what approach we are taking corporately to try and make sure this important area of work is adequately resourced. But I can guarantee that next time you see this, there will be a higher figure than 10%. And that's not necessarily because we will be doing more work on this. I think that there's a chance we've marked ourselves over harshly.
Can I say that's very helpful and, you know, just as we have commented, it's, you know, work on this area was something that the West End Community Council last night was rather key. The council progressed on a bit more quickly than it has been. So I think that will go down well. So thanks.
Do you remember we asked, you mentioned Pamela, that most of the issues around contract services had been dealt with. And I take it that would have been the million pound fraud. But we've had other court cases from then and I don't want to overly ask too many questions, given that we've, has council not had a briefing on that? Or, and there may well be still court cases on the go. So can any of the senior officers give an indication as to whether there is additional audit work needing to happen based on what they know about that case up to now?
Thanks convener. So I'm happy to say that obviously the internal audit plan is driven by the council's risk register, which is reported by Pamela. And Pamela also sets aside X number of days within the audit plan to specifically look at any areas that are of concern, that we feel targeted pieces of work. As you've quite rightly said, there's been a number of focus pieces of work within construction services where we have implemented the actions. And if there is any further work that needs to be done, then I can assure you that we will deploy an internal audit to look at those further, particularly to give scrutiny members the assurance. In relation to those specific activities that you mentioned, they're obviously still ongoing. And just to give you the assurance that internal audit have been fully involved and engaged. And if there's any reports that come out of that, they will be reported through scrutiny committee. And we will of course be reporting back to scrutiny and council once we're in a position to do so, which is not just at this time.
In that case, I'll refrain from asking the questions that I was intending doing so. Okay, thank you. Doesn't appear to be any other questions on that particular report? Is that agreed? Thank you.
Item four, internal audit plan progress report. Again, this is for me.
Thanks. Would it be okay to give you a little introduction?
Yeah, it'd be useful.
Thank you. So this is just a standard report that I bring to scrutiny committee now and again to provide you all with an update on progress towards delivering the internal audit plan that you've previously agreed. Paragraph 4.3 in the report provides a high level summary. But basically it's advising you that as of today, with the reporting of the universal report to scrutiny committee, the 1920 plan is now fully complete. And in relation to the 2021 internal audit plan, it's progressing well, I think, given the circumstances at the moment. With 78% of the individual assignments off the starting block, some of them have already been reported to committee. Some of them are in various other stages of the audit process. And also 67% of the follow ups again have commenced. Appendices one and two provide the detail then that make up that summary that I've just given you. So for each assignment in the plan, you'll see on the right hand side, the column will give you an update on the current position, well, the position when I wrote the report. Things have moved on even since then. Thank you.
Okay, Billy McPherson, you'd like to come in?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks convener. And I concur with Pamela. I think that's really good progress, given the challenging year in relation to the 2021 internal audit plan. I have a very specific question and it's about one aspect that is in the not yet commenced category. And given its importance to, I think, all elected members, which is the issue of homelessness. I was just really wondering at what point the homelessness systems review is likely to be commenced and completed?
So that isn't actually scheduled in yet, but we will be liaising with the service shortly to get, you know, an appropriate time to start that work.
But perhaps when you've got that Pamela, if you could let the members of the scrutiny committee know, seeing the question's been asked?
Yeah, no problem.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions on that report? That report agreed? Okay, thank you.
Item five, Dundee's annual internal audit report. Again, this is for me.
Good. Do we look to ask any questions on this report? Can I maybe ask, is there any officers here that would be able to answer the questions? It was in, I think in relation to the sort of budget. Just wondering, I think this report makes reference to the hospital set aside. And I'm just wondering what we've got in previous years. It seems to be there's an agreement for 2021. It's on page 67 of the report. And obviously makes reference to there being a potential of a, I think, a £4 million deficit at one stage. So I wonder if officers could give any indication of these? Is that Dave? David, do you want to come in?
I can come in on that one in particular, Bailey Keenan, yes. So in relation to the large hospital set aside, this is something that we've been working with partners across NHS Tayside and the two other Tayside IGBs to come to a methodology that kind of fits the, the sort of, kind of, the requirements set out in the legislation. Ourselves and Tayside alongside all the other kind of partnerships across the country have been kind of working to try and get a methodology that kind of, that suits for more or less the last kind of three or four years. And we have got a kind of holding position now that is accepted by Audit Scotland in terms of the external audit report. And that was kind of reported back in the IGB's annual external audit report, which was just presented to the IGB in November. So that is now kind of has been accepted for the current financial year. We continue to have, to work with our colleagues in NHS Tayside to determine the large hospital set aside arrangements for 2122. And that will be reported back through the IGB as part of its budget setting proposals. I think one key element to reflect back in terms of the current year's budget settlement from NHS Tayside was although we, it was not going to necessarily kind of recognise as the full kind of large hospital set aside, there was a transfer of £1 million of resources from NHS Tayside to Dundee IGB, which in effect went straight into investment in social care to represent the continued and sustained reduction in the use of hospital bed days by Dundee residents, which is part of the kind of large hospital set aside kind of arrangement. So we have kind of seen the first kind of significant shift of that resource during the current financial year. And of course, we'll continue to kind of work to make sure that the community investment and the community services are adequate to enable further shifts over the coming years. That was the first question. I think the second question was around the financial monitoring position, which in the report was about the last financial year, so £4 million overspend was projected in 1920. There was £4 million of an overspend at the year end. Again, that's just been kind of set against the, or sort of reflected in the annual accounts that were signed off last month by the IGB. So that, but that consisted of an overspend on the council side and an underspend in the NHS side. So the net position was a £4 million deficit for last financial year. The current financial year, and as you would have noted in the council's revenue monitoring report that was presented to PNR on Monday, we're more or less at a break even point at this financial year once you take out the effect of COVID, where we are still assuming that the COVID additional spend will be fully funded by Scottish Government.
Greg, can I maybe ask on the large hospital set aside, is that the first of any monies you have received for hospital set aside? And was it part of the original agreement in setting up the IGB that there would be that possibility of hospital set aside money coming back in IGB? And how is it days along?
So that's the first kind of formal release of funding that has been provided under that particular mechanism. There has been other transfers of funding from NHS Tayside to social care services through the IGB since its inception from various different routes. But in terms of the specific large hospital set aside, that's the first one that's been badged as that, as that in particular. The issue about it being released, the first time it's been released, I think we need to kind of, we need to recognise the financial challenges from NHS Tayside. So although we did make a move early on to release funding from the large hospital set aside, we didn't have the mechanism and NHS Tayside didn't have the resources to kind of release in that, in that, in these early stages. So we're now at a position where that has happened in relation to that.
Did the IGB set a target on, you know, to receive money as it moves patient care from acute to community led? So is there a target set within the IGB for someone to achieve on hospital set aside every year?
In terms of the financial target, there's not a specific one kind of set. There is, there are a number of performance indicators. So when we set out the number of kind of emergency bed days that we expect the committee of Dundee to use, we kind of set, we can base the kind of level of services that we have in place, the kind of demographic, the impact on the demographics, so the increase in demographic that will go through. And what we think that our interventions will, the impact our interventions will have on the use of kind of hospital bed days. So it's not a, it's not a financial target set, but in terms of performance, we can set where we think the targets will be. And indeed, the number of occupied bed days in terms of unscheduled care in Dundee has kind of dropped significantly since 2016, since the inception of the IGB. And that's what's triggered the kind of the first kind of million pounds transfer from NHS Tayside. So unless we are in a position of being able to kind of demonstrate an evidence of sustained reduction, then there's not a kind of plan to release it. In the Scottish Government's medium term financial plan for health and social care, there is an expectation that there will be kind of release of resources from the acute sector, i.e. the large hospital set aside for investment in health and social care in the future. So that, and that's still there and we still kind of, we push that from an IGB perspective.
Well, we'd ask one more. A million pounds seems an awfully low figure, given that, you know, recently I was told if I didn't meet an appointment, it would be 150 quid. It would cost the health service and I have a text message on my phone that would prove that I got that message. So a million pounds worth of saving seems like you could make it within health quite easily. Especially as we've got, you know, people going back into hospital fairly soon thereafter have been released from hospital within 28 days. You know, there appears to be an ability within community care to affect the acute services budget greatly. services budget greatly, much more greatly than the million quid. Do you think it's, it's kind of low, the figure that you got back there?
I think given where we've been in the past, you know, we kind of gratefully accepted the, the kind of resource transfer over because it has helped in the current financial year to kind of, to sustain a number of our services. We would have had a significant savings target we need to try and achieve if we didn't have it. In terms of the, the kind of scale of it, yeah, obviously as Chief Finance Officer, I would want to see significantly more resources freed up. I think we need to kind of, in the context of the large hospital set aside is around about an 18 million pounds kind of budget as it's being calculated at the moment, the difficulty is in, in the acute sector being able to kind of release kind of actual resources from its, its kind of primarily, its kind of hospital base. So quite, quite a challenge to kind of close down beds and keep those beds closed. Obviously, this financial year might be kind of a bit different as well because of COVID and the impact that COVID's had there. So it is quite difficult for the acute sector to kind of free up that, that resource, particularly over a relatively short, short period in time. And as I said, with NHS T side's overspend position, a lot of the, the savings, if you like, have gone to reduce the, the overspend rather than being kind of a release of resources in total.
Okay, thanks for that response. I think it's helpful when we're trying to reset the agreement for council and IGB. So thanks for these comments. Billy Scott? Yeah?
Yeah, the report talks about previous recommendations not being implemented and the Performance Audit Committee not having met. And I just wanted to check that that is now meeting and that the recommendations from this report have been completed because there's an expectation of completion date of October this year.
Yeah, so the last, last financial year was a bit unusual because we did have one meeting that had to be cancelled because we weren't quorate. That's, that's the first time that's, that's happened in years of the IGB. We now have kind of substitute members that can now join both the IGB and the Performance Audit Committee. So hopefully we're not in that position again. And obviously kind of COVID kind of had an impact right at the kind of, the end of the financial year and the start of this financial year in terms of actually being able to physically meet. We have kind of started up the, the cycle of meetings again. So we've had a, a Performance Audit Committee in September and one in November. So we're kind of back on track with those ones in particular. One of the, the kind of features in the report and one of the, the recommendations, as you point out, is about the lack of progress. That has now been escalated from the Performance Audit Committee to the IGB. Took a report there to the IGB in October, which kind of set out what it was we're going to do within the, the IGB to actually move forward these, these actions. And that includes things like increased capacity. So we have now got a partnership finance manager who will start on Monday. That, that kind of person will lead on a lot of the governance arrangements when they come in. And we're also reviewing the senior management capacity as well, given that we are quite tight on, on management capacity. So, so we have kind of started to kind of, kind of put things in place to make sure that we're not in this position in the future.
Okay.
Good. Councilor McCready?
Excuse me, thank you very much, Convenor. And I'm really quite concerned about this report and the one after it. I think that, you know, there are things that we should be quite worried about. And I'm also aware that the council did have the report on Monday evening about looking at how we redevelop or re-scope the, the agreements and the partnerships with the IGB. Suppose my question for council officers is, you know, this talks about risk in terms of the IGB. Suppose my question is, what risk is there for Dundee City Council as a result of, of these, of, of, of this, this report, possibly the next one, if they want to mention that? Or I can go into that one later. Thanks, Convenor.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, and thanks, Convenor. So just in relation to Councilor McCready's question, obviously the reports are indicating areas of risk. And I think it's important to recognise that obviously what the council is doing is delegating its function to the IGB. The corporate risk register, which has been brought to policy and resources and scrutiny, has the IGB as a corporate risk. And it's something that obviously we continue to monitor and work in partnership with Vicky, Dave and Diane to ensure that if there's any risks materialising, that we don't feel we're able to manage, that we're escalating those and reporting those. So there are mechanisms that are currently in place, particularly around that risk management for the services that the council is delegating to the IGB.
Thanks for that. I mean, can I, does that mean, I mean, I take it that these reports are, I mean, they're obviously public reports, but I mean, I take it, are they flagged up to Scottish Government and the, the Accounts Commission or the Auditor General? I mean, are these, are these things that find their way to the appropriate desks as well, so that there are other folk that are aware of some of these risks that are going on?
Yep, and thanks, Convenor. If I can pass that to Dave Berry to answer, so he'll be aware of what the reporting procedures are for internal audit reports for the IGB.
Okay, thanks, Greg, and thanks, Councilor McCready for that, for that question. Yeah, in terms of the, this particular internal audit report, Audit Scotland as part of their kind of annual audit report have reviewed this particular report and have also reflected some, some of their kind of key findings and recommendations as part of their Audit Scotland report. So that will go to the Controller of Audit as kind of, as a sort of natural kind of progression of that, that anyway. So, so Audit Scotland are part of joining our Performance Audit Committee meetings as well and observe the business there too. So any, any issues or concern that's flagged up through either the IGB or the Performance Audit Committee is, is kind of well, kind of well established within, within Audit Scotland.
Okay. So is Vicki Ireland, she looking to make a comment?
Yeah, it was just to follow up on that issue of connectivity to certainly Audit Scotland and Scottish Government and the, in terms of where the recommendations find their way through to. One of the reports on the table today also refers to the recommendations that came out of the Ministerial Steering Group last year. And it offers an opinion in terms of our progress against those. I think it's fair to say that some of the issues that have been identified through the internal audit report within Dundee City, particularly when it's making references to our connectivity to both partner organisations and sometimes the complexity of reporting arrangements that is covered as a result of that, a common across a number of other IGBs in Scotland. So those key messages definitely form part of national discussion and should form part of our review, the integration scheme as well locally.
Okay. Any further questions, Councilor McCready, or you? I'll leave the response.
I think, I think that's helpful. But I mean, I do, I do think, I mean, I think, you know, I think what Mr Colgan said was also very important that we need to take that on board, that this is a part of our, this is clearly seen as part of the risk for Dundee City Council. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Is that report agreed? Okay. Thank you.
Item six, Dundee integration joint board internal audit report, the security measures practices.
Good. Any questions on this report? We asked a question on, on the report. Obviously, I think this is the one that suggests that sort of management week, is that the point you were making reference to things being bolstered up a little, Dave? When you had referenced it, would you maybe talk me through some of these other three points of weakness that's in the report, is it? I've got one.
Certainly. So yes, in terms of the audit, you know, recommendations there, yeah, absolutely the sort of kind of overall capacity of the, of the management team to create forward sort of governance arrangements. In addition to the, the operational kind of management has been quite, quite, quite challenging. And obviously kind of the current financial year, the current year has been even more challenging due to the impact of COVID and the COVID response. I'd already kind of indicated in the previous response around some, some enhancements to that management capacity that they're going to bring in, which will, will, will help kind of move a lot of these things on. So, and a lot of that, again, as, as Vicki had kind of mentioned, the interdependencies on our kind of partner bodies to, to deliver on a lot of these things is absolutely key because it is a partnership. So for a number of actions, for instance, around risk management and around IT, for instance, we do have sort of T side wide established kind of working groups now that will work our way through particular audit recommendations that have come, that have come through over the last couple of years. So mainly from internal audit reports, so either through Pamela's team or from sort of kind of wider corporate reviews, some of the, the recommendations from them are being worked through as a kind of joint response to, to those ones. Excuse me. I think in terms of the, the, the kind of the establishment of a number of working groups, et cetera, and the, the fact that a lot of these have kind of grown organically, we need to kind of have a wee bit more sort of control over how they, they operate and how their timescales work. I think it's just been a reflection of the establishment of the IGB and the health and social care kind of arrangements that we are constantly adapting to situations and circumstances. And therefore we've got to a point where we can, we can now stop and start to kind of review what it is we've got established. To say that COVID's kind of in effect or the COVID response has helped that a little bit because we've been able to run without a number of things happening for some time without seeing any negative effect in terms of some of the groups. So it's given us that chance to kind of pause it and kind of reflect back whether these groups are actually required and what, what is required in their, in their place. In terms of the third, the third recommendation, we're talking, when it talks about the, the kind of risk register and the risk management, again, that's, that's kind of down, we're accepting that that needs to be reviewed as, as suggested within the, within the audit report itself as well.
Okay. Thanks very much for your answer, Steve. Is there any other questions? Is that report agreed? Okay, thank you.
Item seven, Dundee integration joint board internal audit plan 202021.
Want to see any on that report, Pamela, is this yours or?
Sorry, it's just really to bring to your attention the internal audit plan for 2021 for the IGB, which is basically the 1920 plan that's been carried forward. Agreement was reached at the pack on the 24th of September to do that. So it will be delivered by my team, but also by FTF.
Given, given what we've heard from Davis, there likely to be any changes from the point of view of maybe got an overabundance of working groups that, you know, that kind of be coped with. Perhaps needn't look at. I don't know whether you want to comment or that yourself, Dave?
I, I think in terms of the scope of the, the reports that will be looked at this year, with the governance and assurance ones, the one we've just looked at, so that'll cover kind of, a kind of a lot of the structural issues and the, the kind of complex governance issues. But we're left with an effect, the two, two big ones, which will be performance management and the adverse events management. So there may be some connection there, particularly around the groups around kind of what's in place around performance management and also indeed around adverse events management. I know that the performance management one is certainly underway. So we'll kind of wait and see what, what the outcome of that as we, as we progress. So there, there may be something there, Bailey Keenan, that'll, that'll be a recommendation to reduce.
Okay. So I didn't see any other questions. This report agreed? Okay. Thank you.
Item eight, by annual report only.
So who? Andrea, are you addressing this report, yeah? Sorry. Andrea?
Sorry, I did take my cell phone off just to put it back on. This report provides information on the first half of this financial year. So I would probably highlight that complaints are slightly down compared to last year. And I think that's basically been the COVID impact and due to schools being closed for part of that period. Just a bit of context, obviously appendix two sets out a summary of some of the transactions that go on in the council. And as you know, there's tens of millions of transactions go on. So putting in context, the level of complaints is actually quite low for the city council. The performance is slightly dipped this year for both in stage one and stage two. And again, we did highlight this to customers right at the beginning, that there would likely to be some delay just because officers were deployed onto emergency work and also because people weren't in the office and maybe didn't have the same connectivity with other officers that they needed to quickly deal with complaints. But I think performance is quite reasonable, given all of that. The survey shows that results of people, how they feel satisfied with how we deal with the complaints. And we've also tried to highlight some compliments within there. These aren't all the compliments and you'll be aware that under COVID, we've had a lot of compliments through the helpline about all the supports that were put in place around food and, and other activities there. Finally, I would just highlight that in this report each year, this is when we put in the ombudsman's feedback from the previous year. And you'll see that there's two partially upheld complaints there. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Councilor McCready?
Yes, thanks very much, Convenor. I mean, I, I just, I mean, I wanted to make a comment and possibly a suggestion, which I hope you would agree to, Convenor. I think, you know, I think we should look at appendix five and the compliments. I think it's quite easy. Sometimes it's even easier when you're a, when you're an opposition councillor to focus on the negative stuff, but I think we should focus on the positive stuff of what council employees have done. So I think, you know, you see here, you know, the first few comments, I wish to say a big thank you to all workers trying to keep our city up and running and in touch with the latest developments. I really appreciate it all and hope you all stay safe and well. Thank you. I would like to congratulate the bin men for, on their excellent service. They continue to provide in difficult circumstances and it goes on. I mean, I think we see people who really are key workers here, you know, you know, I think we shouldn't, I think far too often, I said it on Monday night, far too often we diminish the role of the city council and of, and of council employees and of council workers. And I think we should be, we should be proud of the difference we make, that the city council and its workforce are making in the city. And I think, you know, we should be saying that these folk are key workers. So on that basis, Convenor, I don't know. I think my proposal would be that we write to the Scottish Government, ask them to look at including council key workers in any bonus schemes that are coming forward. And I proposed it yourself and probably Mr Colgan write that. So Mr Colgan hopefully start off on the right foot as the new chief executive try to campaign for a wee bonus for the, for the workforce.
Kind of happy enough to accept that going forward and talk to the chief executive about a letter like that going together to, to be sent. I think it's only sensible. And I dare say the trade unions will be knocking, we're door down looking for it soon. Can I, can I maybe, given that you have raised the very positive issues around the staff, can I maybe ask the, the chief executive to have these sort of circulated to employees so as the, you know, it's not a bad news that they're receiving in, in, in circulars that go out that there's, that there's a good comments as well? Andrea, you looking to come back in?
Yeah, I suppose I was just going to let you know that we do actually circulate the feedback where we can identify particular officers. We do let them know individually where it's more general. We do try to feed that back to the service management teams to make sure that the, the group of staff that are maybe being highlighted are praised for their hard work and are aware that their hard work's appreciated.
Good, thank you. Greg, you looking to come in? I notice Elaine's looking to come in as well at some time.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I think it's a really good point that's been made and it's something that I tried to cover in a video message that will be going out to staff, obviously starting Manu Post this week, which is thanking all the Post this week, which is thanking all the staff for their hard work, commitment and dedication. So just picking up on the point that's been raised by yourself, councillor McCready and Andrea, it's something that I would intend to do and putting out to all staff before the Christmas break up, just again thanking them and including some of the quotes within that personal message from myself. So I'm more than happy to do that, which is on top, I think, of other methods that Andrea has discussed where we put that feedback to them. But it certainly would be my intention to continue to recognise the contribution that the council staff are making, particularly during the last nine months where it's been some challenging and difficult times.
And perhaps that we should mention within the letter to the First Minister, that we should highlight some of these things that people are saying in relation to scrutiny. Councillor Short, you looking to come in?
Yeah, I was just to say that I, as you know, love the compliment section and I really appreciate that, what must be about two years ago now, that you added it when I'd asked for it. And to also say that I'm sure Vicky and Dave are listening because I also asked for it at the Park when I got a chance to go there recently as well. So I think we have all known just how incredible the staff of Dundee City Council are, and it's always great to see that the wider world are now picking up and appreciating just how much the day-to-day lives of people are impacted by what we do within the city council. So as always, thank you.
Thanks very much. I'd of course to thank Greg on Friday afternoon for something done in my area to stop a shop being flooded. So I do appreciate the efforts that officers put in on behalf of citizens in the city. Can I maybe just ask one question, and not trying to bring this to a negative again, but the ombudsman upheld two parts of the complaint, and I'm just wondering how we review that and as to whether in reviewing that, if we'd have given in on these two parts, would it have stopped the complaint coming forward?
So in general, the two complaints were, I suppose, quite more technical issues rather than maybe decision issues. And Paul Clancy might want to come in after to maybe give you a quick outline. So I think what the ombudsman was saying in one case was that they were satisfied the council had carried out reasonable assessments, but it was more to do with how they'd actually tied it back into a lack of view and how we'd properly recorded it rather than maybe coming to the wrong decisions. And then the second one was where there was discretion, that officers had appropriately used their discretion, but maybe it wasn't clear to people applying for something that, how that discretion could be used. But I know that Paul and his team have looked at these in a bit more detail, so he might be able to say if any further improvements have been put into the system to try and not, these things not to come back up again.
Yeah, thanks. Is there any other questions? Paul, you looking to come in yet?
No, it's fine if, I mean, I'm just happy to kind of go into more detail if you wanted, but if you're happy with the response Andrea's provided, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, thanks, Paul. That report agreed? Okay, thank you.
Item 9, city and council plan mid-year progress report.
Convener, this, oh, sorry, I was just going to say this report went to P and R on Monday night, so and then gets remitted to scrutiny if you've got any more additional questions for it.
Seems to be no additional questions. The report agreed? Okay, thank you.
Item 10, local code or corporate governance.
Okay, is there any questions on this report?
Yeah, I have a question.
Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, thanks, convener. It's, if we go to the appendix two, the progress updates, on page 137, the second bottom one, number seven, it's about the relaunch of the anti-money laundering policy and guidance, which was originally due early on in the year, was understandably delayed during Covid. Now, it indicates the revised target date for that actually being completed is the 31st of December. I reckon we're less than 25 days away from that, a little bit less than 25 days away from that. And I was just really wondering if any of the officers can indicate if that actually will be met by the end of the year.
Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener. So can I just ask Sandy Flight to give you an update with regards to where we are with the progress on implementing this policy? Sandy?
Yeah, thanks, Greg. So certainly all the groundwork has been put in place for this, so everything is there. I suppose the only question is whether we actually want to launch the communication before the end of the year or not. It's an issue of whether this is the best time to get an impact in terms of raising awareness with staff. So the work is all done. I suppose we're just having a discussion with communications about whether it's appropriate to put it out at this time of year or whether it'll get lost in the pre-Christmas message. But all the work is done, so it will certainly be launched before then or very shortly afterwards in the new year.
That's very helpful, Sandy. Thanks for that. My question wasn't really about, you know, the launch and the publicity around it, it was more just to ensure that the work had happened and that's very reassuring. My own personal view of what it's worth is, this is absolutely not the time to be promoting it. And perhaps maybe after the festivities are out of the way and into the new year would be, you know, in terms of actually having maximum impact would probably be best.
Okay, no, thank you, yeah.
Greg, are you looking to come back in?
Apologies, convener, it's just a legacy hand.
Okay. Doesn't appear to be any other questions, so and that appears to be the end of the business. I'd like to wish you all a happy new year and have a nice time of Christmas. Meet up with family but stay safe. We'll catch up with you as later. Thanks again, have a nice time. Cheers.
Thanks, convener.
Thank you, bye.